Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, whatever time of day it is. Thank you for tuning into Conversations with Dr. Don. For your first time viewers, Conversations with Dr. Don is an ongoing series of one-hour standalone talk shows where I interview interesting people like most of you out there about who they are as unique, one-of-a-kind individuals and about whatever it is that we have decided to talk about. And a little nervous now because my guest is going to be impressive, I'm sure of that. And she is Sharon Maxwell. She's running for city council in Portland, Oregon. And we're going to talk about her, who she is personally, to get an idea where she's coming from, when she talks about her race and other things. And then we'll go into more things relative to the city council candidacy and whatever else comes up. And as you know, you don't need to answer any questions that you don't want to answer. You're going to have a good time, and I promise you, all right?
Thank you, Dr. Don.
How are you feeling right now?
I'm feeling great. Thank you for this opportunity.
My pleasure. You're not nervous?
No, not really.
Son of a gun, that makes me mad! I've been doing this for 15 years, and I get nervous. Occasionally, I have a guest like you, it's just calm as can be, you know?
Yes, well, being a businesswoman, I'm out in the public and speaking with people all the time. So you also make me feel comfortable right now, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shall we get started?
Sure.
If I were to ask your best friend, "Who is Sharon?", what would your best friend say? Sharon is what?
Well, Sharon, I'm an African-
No, you said "I'm". Your best friend is speaking now, not you. Sharon is-
Okay. Well, Sharon is an African-American woman who has been born and raised here in Portland, Oregon. She's lived in north-northeast Portland all of her life. Sharon, this year will reach a milestone, her 50th birthday. Yes. And Sharon is a very charismatic, caring person who is full of energy and ready to take on big challenges.
Yes! I love it. That's it, we can stop the show now. Yeah, sounds good. And when and where were you born? You already said-
So I was born here in Portland, Oregon in November of 1964, which was also the same year that Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Civil Rights Bill, and it was passed. And one year after the march on Washington with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the many of hundreds of thousands of people who showed up in Washington, DC to ask for justice and equality in jobs.
Wow, you got that done pretty good. 64?
64, right, which I believe is a very significant year.
Of course. Occasionally, I'll see a bit on the screen about Lyndon Johnson, and I always remember him saying, "And we shall overcome." It brings a tear to my eye, even to this day, you know?
Yes, yes, yes. As I've been hearing different ones, Al Sharpton, the president, was in Texas with the former presidents, George Bush and Bill Clinton. And he gave an awesome speech and just said that this is a great opportunity to continue and pick up that torch. And that's what I'm feeling a sense of, is what Dr. King stood for, was economic justice, civil rights justice, and equality for all people.
Okay, you're ready tonight. I always have a trick question. Shall I ask you now or later on?
Let's go for it now.
Why were you born?
Well, I believe every person is born with a purpose and a plan. And because I was born in 1964, I believe the greater one who created the universe recognized that 50 years later, we would still be asking this difficult question around race, around equality, around civil rights, civil liberties, and human rights for people still in America. And I believe that at this time, we need more champions who will pick up the torch, especially the fact that our leaders, and specifically African-American communities and communities of color, have rototilled, I say, the landscape of the politics and community. But it's now time for that next generation. And I believe I have that next generation Joshua or Caleb mantle to be able to say, "Let's continue to stand for equality. Let's continue to stand for economic justice." Because we still have yet to really see communities of color have that humanity acknowledged. And also to be able to have a quality of life. Because we shouldn't be asking these same questions 50 years later.
Who's the "we" you're talking about? You said "we" about six times, and who's the "we" you're talking about?
"We", "us", "and", "our". People of color, people who have been marginalized, people who have been disenfranchised, people who have been disassociated and left behind and still left out. As a woman who has been born and raised in a predominantly all-white city, majority-white city, I grew up believing that I would be able to one day have a good quality of life, and my children as well. And in the 1980s, when I graduated from high school and recognized that drugs and gangs had come into the community, I was walking to school as a college student down on 17th and Killingsworth in northeast Portland. And I could remember seeing a sign in the grocery store. This was a grocery, small grocery store, family-owned, and it said, "Closing." And I knew the family quite well. They were Caucasian family that lived in Alameda, and they owned two grocery stores.
This is important, isn't it?
This is in Portland, Oregon. And I went in, and Mark, the son of the owner, was there. And I said, "Hey, Mark, what's going on?" I said, "What's about this closing sign?" And Mark said to me, "Well, things are getting really bad in the community. People are afraid to come in. You know, we're not making as much money as we used to." And, you know, he said, as a second-generation person in the business, he said, "I'm ready to do something else." But the thought that came to my mind at that time, and I can remember it very vividly, was that our city leaders and our community leaders would address this new situation, which we had all been hearing about, drugs and gangs. And at that time, I went ahead and said, "I'm going to go ahead and go to school and get my education." And that's what I did.
All right, let me continue on with my cheat sheet here. And I think before the camera started rolling, you and I were chatting about our cultural, national, racial heritage. And I mentioned I'm red, white, and black, and we chatted about that. And you mentioned something similar about yourself. What about your cultural heritage? Is there anything that the viewers would find interesting about you?
Well, sure. My great-grandfather, Willie Alvin Williams, who, he's married to my great-aunt Trula Williams. They both taught on the Navajo Indian Reservation for 40 years.
Forty years?
Forty years, yes. And Uncle Willie is a very profound writer. And so what he did was, he researched his side of the family's genealogy and my aunt, which is my great-aunt's, my whole family's side of the genealogy. And he identified actually that we are African-American, that we are possibly Choctaw Indian, and there's a potential that we have Jewish lineage.
You got everything! You didn't miss anything. Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have a religious preference today?
At this time, I have pretty much been raised Christian, coming from the CME, so Christian-American Methodist Episcopal. And then going to charismatic and now non-denominational, which is Christian.
Charismatic. What is that?
Just more freer. We love to worship. Being free with our worship. There's a scripture that says, "Where the spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty." So you can be uninhibited in your worship and praise because he says, "Let everything that has breath praise ye the Lord."
Who said that?
That's what the Lord said, the Lord Most High.
Okay. Did you know I'm a humanist?
No.
I'm an agnostic.
Okay.
I don't know if there is a heaven after, if there's a God or not. I'm not saying there ain't or there is.
I have a personal relationship for myself.
Of course. It works for you. That's what counts.
Yes.
And it helps you to be KFC, that's my motto, kind friend and charitable.
That's what I'm talking about.
But we're not talking about me, no, we're talking about you.
Thank you, Dr. Don.
Okay, how are we doing? Okay?
We're doing great.
All right. And your formal education?
So I'm graduate from high school, graduate of associate's degree from Portland Community College. And now I'm finishing up my bachelor's in business administration at Warner Pacific University.
And how soon before you finished that?
April of 2015. And I'm actually a certified carpenter, and I have several years of training as a sprinkler fitter. That's how I started my construction business as a general contractor over 22 years ago.
You're an assertive woman.
Well, you know, it takes being a woman of courage to step up to the challenge. When I recognized in 1993 that our community was being destroyed in Portland, Oregon, north-northeast Portland, where I was born and raised, recognizing that we were better than that. And I said, "If this situation with the boarded-up homes with people dying because they were being, I call it guerrilla warfare, chemical crack cocaine being introduced into the community as a recreational drug, but yet it was psychologically taking out the black middle class and people that lived in that neighborhood, I said, 'We can do better than this.'" And that's when I went to Portland Community College Skill Center and found out about the Construction Trades Program. And they were offering carpentry, they were offering electrical, they were offering HVAC, and a few other trades. And when I heard about the program, I recognized it was carpentry that would allow me to participate and do my part in helping to rebuild the community.
You have brothers and sisters, do you?
I do. I have actually, by my mom, I have one sister, and I have two brothers. And then I have half-brothers and sisters.
Yeah. How'd you get to be the way you are?
My parents. I want to give all glory and honor and respect to my parents. My mom, Johnny May, and my dad, Dicky Anderson, raised us with respect and dignity for ourselves and for other people. My parents were role models for us and for our community, for our whole entire family. My mom was one of eight children. My dad was one of 17. His parents had 17 children, which three sets of twins, and he was the youngest. Yes. And so my mom really was one of the first African-American engineers for Pacific Northwest Bell, starting in the 70s. And so she was part of that affirmative action group that was able to excel and participate in upward mobility and being able to become a regional manager for Pacific Northwest Bell for the whole northwest area, all the way to Denver. And mom was an inspiration to us as the children and to my dad because he worked at ESCO, at the steel mill. And dad made sure that mom was able to do her thing as well as him. When she would go off on her trips, to travel, he was a great dad. He made sure that we had dinners and that everything was great. So my parents, who have set that great example for me, I will never forget it.
Where are they today?
My dad did have a heart attack in 1997, of June, and my mom is still living. And we call her Honey May because her grandfather was a honeybee raiser. And so with her name, you know, back in the, I would say, the early days, but that's not early days, but I would say back in the 40s and 50s where people were still farming and had homesteads, they wanted boys. And so my mom was named Johnny May after her grandfather. And so, but we called her Little Honey because the kids had made up a song, and it was just natural fit because her grandfather was Big Honey.
You got that history down pretty well memorized.
Yes.
So they give you some good stuff?
Yeah, it gave me a great, I would call it a great impartation and deposit to help me to have the life skills and the tools to be able to first know myself and understand who I am so I could identify my purpose, but also have the right example to look to. I can remember my dad sharing some things with me that, you know, I would have never known had he not, you know, said it. And it helped, prevented me from making wrong choices. And mom as well, you know, mom was always the prissy one. Dad was always, "Go outside and let those kids, you know, have fun and take those dresses off those girls and let them put some shorts and tennis shoes on." So I had a balance there between the both of them.
Would you hazard the contribution that made you who you are between nature and nurture? How much of it was genes and how much of it is environment that has you the way that you are today? An assertive woman who's delightful to visit with and impressive. And I speak straight.
So I believe it was both because your environment, you know, you learn what you're around, the people that you're around. And, but I also know that part of the genes is because he was my stepdad. I have a natural father who is still living, and I look just like him. And there are some similarities, even though he didn't raise me, that I have a tendency based on his genes. And so, you know, I think, you know, that your genes are your DNA, but then also the people who are in your environment, role model for you, the behavior, and they nurture you. And my dad was always, and my mom, always very loving. Mom is always kindful and thoughtful. But dad, because I was the oldest, he always made sure that I could take care of myself. And when I say that, as a female going into a non-traditional industry of construction, that would have been really intimidating. But because dad kind of trained me in a way to make sure I take care of myself and wouldn't be intimidated, I think that really helped me not to, you know, be afraid to go into that industry.
Okay.
You asked Dr. Don, I'm telling you the truth.
Yeah, I love to hear it. It sounds good. Because I'm interested in you being a success in your city council race and whatever goes on beyond that. And learning who you are, just as I ask you these questions that I've asked other people before, and learning who you are and sensing who you are, and I'm impressed and pleased.
Thank you.
Yes, and I can tell, even now, I want to support you in the future in any quest that you choose to-
Thank you, I appreciate the feedback. And that's why I'm running, is because of my experience, Dr. Don. I believe I have something to offer to the citizens of Portland, Oregon in that I have a track record of seeing things that need to be done, very difficult and challenging things that I think our city leaders and maybe our community leaders have shied away and have taken the wrong approaches. Because I don't believe north-northeast Portland had to go through the blight, the devastation, the destruction, the families' lives had to be destroyed the way that they were over this last 21 years, that our young people didn't have to self-destruct, that our families didn't have to be separated because of CSD and just the factors and the environment that you talk about, the things that were introduced into that environment.
We'll talk some more about that in the second half of the show. Let's continue on with the personal part of you and how you are the way that you are today. And you talk about your work life.
I'm a mother. I was married for 17 years. I have four children. My oldest daughter will be 29 May 9th. Her name is Miriam Tatum Alexandra. Then my second daughter is 25. She'll be 26 in December. That's Delisha Shanay Hendricks. And then there's Cynthia Georgina, she'll be 24. And then I have one son, Nathaniel James, he's 22. And four grandchildren. Hi, sugar babies.
Do they love mom?
Oh, they love grandma. So there is Nylea, she's six, six and a half, she would say. Then there's Akaya, and she's going to be six on Saturday. And then there's Akari, and he's four going on 34. And then there is Jadeya, she's two and a half months old. And they're just all just beautiful.
Tell me about your work. You're a carpenter?
I'm a carpenter by trade and a sprinkler fitter. As I went into the construction industry, I always had, I would say, an affinity to carpentry just based on my faith that Jesus was a carpenter. And so that intrigued me in that sense. But not only that, but just that the trade itself, being able to build something and do something for yourself. And that's, I'm very industrious in that way.
I'm curious about being a carpenter because I'm the baby of the five boys and the seven girls my mother had, and all of my brothers, and Papa was a carpenter.
Okay, awesome.
And I was a little boy, and I'm 86 this year. And I remember seeing Papa coming home from work with his big toolbox hung over his shoulder. And at that time, they didn't have all that electrical stuff. It was all hand stuff.
Yes.
But for some reason, I didn't follow in their footsteps. I wanted to be something different, and I was. And have a lot of careers through my life. Took my doctorate many years later, dropped out of junior high school because things were so hard in New Orleans with segregation like that. And I'm kind of bragging a little bit, that feels good. But thinking about-
Help yourself.
What you're about and carpentry.
And sprinkler fitter, so that's of the plumbing and pipe fitting. So my first apprenticeship, because they would not let me into carpenters' union at the time, there was still that stigma that women shouldn't be in the construction field.
You bet.
I was able to get into the sprinkler fitting. And my first project was the Rose Quarter, which is now the Moda Center. And I worked on that project almost till completion with my journeyman and foreman. I reamed all of that pipe that goes through the concourse, that is-
Yeah, kicking in.
That goes through all of the suites. And I put in most of those sprinkler heads. And I would, you know, carry those 15-foot-long, probably weighed anywhere between 50 to 100 pounds. That was real cast iron and sometimes steel pipe, stainless steel. So that was a great experience because it was there really at that Moda Center now that I understood that, yes, construction was what I wanted to do. And that's where I really seen my future. And so I had made up my mind that I was going to stick with it because, as you know, being a female, that you always get that harassment and type of thing. But because of how my dad raised me, and he let me know about men and how that they respond. And a lot of my friends in high school were guys. And so I didn't take it personally. I was able to not wear my femininity on my sleeve, but able to recognize this is a work environment, and you have to know the difference between being professional and personal and just going along with, you know, guys, that's just what they do.
So you experienced some sexism?
Sexism as well as sexual harassment on the job there, where I did have to file a harassment complaint because I didn't feel like I should have to put up with every day being, you know, "Hey, baby, this," or, you know, just things that were inappropriate at the job site. Yeah.
Are you working now or spending all of your time running for the city council?
At this time, I'm running for city council. And so I've put my business on hold because I determined that this was the right time. And it was a good time to transition because I didn't have very much debt, even though I did have a lot of contracts that were still on the books. But I felt that I could not sit by another second, another minute, another day, another hour, another five years, another 20 years, and defer to other people who I know don't have it within them to represent the interests of citizens through the 95 neighborhoods in Portland.
Okay. And you mentioned your husband?
Yes, I was married, my second husband. I've been married twice. And my second husband and I, he was in construction. So when I started the business, it was a partnership. And that first business was Hendricks Loyal Construction. And it was strictly focusing on residential work because that's what was happening in the neighborhood, that there were blocks and blocks boarded up houses in north-northeast Portland. And we were able to work with realtors. We got our first contract within 30 days of starting our business, of $50,000 to basically what they would call it now, to flip a house, renovate and remodel it.
Yeah, okay. How would you characterize your political persuasion? Are you left, right, center? Are you a Tea Party or a-
Well, I'm definitely, I would say I'm a Democrat. And I feel that I'm very, I would say, moderate in the center because as a businesswoman, I recognize that there's a balance between making sure that economically we have a stable economy as well as making sure that we have the right solutions as it relates to humanity. And I think that's where we've dropped the ball. We haven't invested. When I refer to it as human capital or social capital. Investing in people, you get a return on that. But when you criminalize and lock people up and throw them away, you get no return on that investment.
And that's what's going on today in America?
That's what's going on in America, all over America. And we need to turn it around. And I believe the Attorney General and our President Barack Obama are making some good decisions to make sure that people who were criminalized due to no fault of their own and also labeled because they didn't have the ability or the resources to defend themselves, covert missions and just the strategy of the war on drugs completely annihilated devastated urban communities in which were particularly people of color.
So you think there's racism still in America today?
There is racism in America today. And it's based on ignorance and the fact that people in America, in all cities, have not recognized our Declaration of Independence and Constitution that, first of all, all people are created equal and have been endowed with the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And so we have to first acknowledge our humanity between each other. So when I see you, Dr. Don, or anyone else, it is good, hello, neighbor, hello, friend, how are you? And I would wait for your response to see what you were going to say. And if it is, "I'm well" or "Things are great," then, you know, let's break bread. If you tell me that things are not good, I'm going to ask you to tell me more because I cannot sit another day and see people. And that's, as a businesswoman, I was the one building the deterrent fences for the homeless camps, seeing people up under bridges digging caves and holes and living in it, so.
So you identify yourself as a Democrat, belong to the Democratic Party. And there are some of us, I'm a progressive populist, old-fashioned liberal leftist, died in the war.
Okay.
And I feel guilty that I wasn't able to march at that time with Martin Luther King on the Edmund Pettus Bridge.
Were you close, though, around there, anywhere?
No, I was in New Orleans, trying to survive and recognize that I wasn't born deficient or dumb or all that sort of thing.
Right, exactly.
I got stories that'll go on forever and ever.
Well, and that's what I believe as well, Dr. Don, is that people have the ability, they have the potential. And I believe in people. I believe in the innovation and the ingenuity of the human spirit, that when we acknowledge the humanity of people and invest in them to make sure that they have a good education, that they're able to have success.
When you say "we," you're talking about Americans.
Americans, yes.
Why aren't Americans doing what you just described that they need to be doing?
Because I believe we've bought into a lie, a lie and wrong thinking. We've basically turned against ourselves because how can we not acknowledge the person right next door to us or the person walking down the street, but we want to send money to Africa and Haiti and to all of these third-world countries?
So the lie is that these are more important than taking care of American citizens here at home?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Time, they're going to yell at me in a minute, but I got to ask you a couple more questions. So do you have any memberships in political, social, or civic organizations that are worth mentioning to the viewers?
Sure. So I am a member of OWAMI, which is the Oregon Association of Minority Entrepreneurs. I've been in that group for the last 14 years as a business owner. Been a member of AGC, which is the Association of General Contractors. And then my company, signatory to local 290 plumbers, steam fitters, and pipe fitters, as well as local ten, the painters. And then I've participated with the Democratic Party as a PCP since two thousand eight and just re-upped my PCP and.
What's a PCP?
That is a precinct committee person.
Okay.
Precinct committee person, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right.
And then last year, also recognizing in the African-American community the National Urban League and the NAACP because of some of the strides that we have made in getting some equality, those groups basically have had to restart themselves in some cities. And so PAF, Portland African-American Leadership Forum, was, is another group that was started to help develop leadership within the African-American community. But they now, they've kind of changed their format. I was on their civic and leadership engagement group. But I feel that at this time, it's best for me to focus on my campaign and make sure I'm representing all voices across the ninety-five neighborhoods.
All voices across, no, okay. Any persons alive today or from the past that you particularly admired or looked up to? Any names come to mind?
Sure. I would like to say FDR, Franklin Delano Roosevelt.
Yeah.
And Jimmy Carter. Franklin Delano Roosevelt because of the New Deal, where he talked about freedom from want, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and also freedom from fear. I believe there's a lot of fear that's being promoted within our society across America and within our cities. And as humanity, we have nothing to fear, but fear itself. And so we should not, people should not be in want, especially in the United States of America. We, we are the wealthiest, one of the wealthiest nations in the world that we should want to make sure that every person has their basic needs met and that they can have a quality of life. And the other person would be former President Jimmy Carter. I met, got to meet him when he was in Portland this last month. And his book, Call to Action, about women and politics and religion. And it just, he was just hitting every topic right on the nose and really exposing some of the bad history of America as it relates to African-American and people of color, the marginalization of women, and also the marginalization of African-Americans.
Yeah, we're gonna need to take a break here because I'm gonna really be in trouble. Mr. E., Mr. Director, can we take a break? Okay, we're back. And thanks for staying tuned. And we will now turn on here chatting between the two halves of the show. But, and for your viewers who missed the opening of the show, you're watching Conversations with Dr. Don. It's an ongoing series of one-hour talk shows where I interview interesting people, like my guest here, Sharon Maxwell, about who she is and what she's about as a candidate for the Portland Oregon City Council. And I'm very impressed and pleased with how the first half of the show has gone. And I've enjoyed you.
Thank you.
I think we need a couple more hours instead of just another twenty minutes or so.
I'm sure we could go on for a couple more hours as well.
Yeah. So let's go on with the second half of the show. Let's start off formally with a few simple questions because our viewers run the gamut of minimally educated, M.D.s and researchers and PhDs and whatever. So what is a city council? And I ask this question because I remember as a little kid in New Orleans, I didn't have any civics classes and I dropped out of junior high. And I didn't learn this stuff. And even now, I'm learning stuff I should have learned in junior high school.
We all should have.
Yeah. So what is a city council?
So the city council, per the city's charter, has the regulatory and municipality authority to govern the city's services and make decisions on behalf of the governed. And what that means is that the mayor, there's the mayor, there's four other council persons that are elected by the vote of the people. And at this time, that is based on a citywide election. And then it's the mayor's responsibility to distribute and assign bureaus. There are, at this time, twenty-nine bureaus of the city of Portland. And the city commissioners are assigned, it could be anywhere from, I believe it's like three to four different assignments. And it's really up to the mayor's call on how he would like to distribute those assignments. And to date, I've been able to meet with every last one of the city's bureau directors as a part of my strategy because I am a people person, but I'm also a manager and I'm also a business owner. And I, and I like people and I want to be able to connect with these bureau managers as people because I believe that's part of the issue that we're having right now at city, at the city of Portland, is that there's a disconnect from upper management and city commissioners and a disconnect with bureau directors and the people who work up under them. So I believe it's very important to have a connection with the people that you're working with so that you're able to respect them and they also respect you and understand your passion and your heart and how you can communicate with them.
Why is there a disconnect, as you were just talking about?
I believe there's been just the, well, I've heard is that there's the form of government as it relates to how the bureaus sometimes are assigned. And if a city commissioner doesn't get a bureau that they want, then there's some back and forth. And that's why part of my platform is to bring forward single-member districts. Single-member districts is allow, will it allow city elections for city commissioners based similarly as the county is on districts? And, or we could do it based on the seven district coalitions of the neighborhood associations. And what that, and based on the fact that it's very difficult to run for a citywide election because it costs too much money.
Of course.
So running per district would allow everyday average citizens of the governed, like myself, who has a desire to run, to be able to raise enough money to actually execute a competitive race versus trying to run the whole citywide. And then the real important part with the single-member districts is that it will allow the people that live in those districts to have a better connection communication-wise, have the city commissioner be more connected and understand the pulse as it relates to planning bureaus and managing projects and dollars so that we can have a better handle on where the monies are going and where the priorities and needs are as it relates to infrastructure projects and capital development.
What's the chances of you, of you getting that done if you are elected?
Well, based on, I'm getting good response from citizens as I've been going through the ninety-five neighborhoods over the last five months. And yesterday on another forum, City Commissioner Dan Saltzman, as well as candidate Jim Franciscone for Montana County Chair, both said that they felt that that would be something that could work.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So say a little more about what, what you expect to happen if you are elected to the city council.
Sure. Really what I'm expecting, Don, and citizens is that we have a more shared community value as it relates to all people participating and the voice of citizens being really heard and listened to at city hall.
By changing the organization as you were just describing it.
Yes. But also too, because we've been an all-white city council for almost a hundred and fifty years, ever since the incorporation of the city of Portland.
Why is that?
Well, it's based on, I believe, fear as well as marginalization. We've only had two African-American men, our late former Charles Jordan, who just passed away a few weeks ago, and Dick Vogel. And there were twenty years in between both of their serving on the city council.
Is it racism?
I believe some of it is racism, but also is mar, I would really say is marginalizationism.
What, what does that, what does that mean, marginalization in this situation?
Well, it, to me, it seems more like a superior. We're better than and you're under us. And therefore, we haven't accepted the fact that all people are created equal and have the ability to contribute at the same level, just like I had mentioned to you earlier.
Aren't you talking about racism in nice terms?
Well, it could be nice terms.
I can be provocative in my questions.
But what I would say is that there's no flexibility or openness to, I would say, share in the power structure. Because when I look at how the neighborhood associations and how the city has broken off the different ethnic groups. So there's the Urban League that gets a pot of money. There is this Center for Interracial Cultural Organization. There is the Latino Network. And then there is NEA. So the African refugees, you know, group, the Latino Hispanics. Then you have the Native American and then African-American. Why would we need to separate out ethnic groups from the overall general population?
Some people are suggesting that these groups separate themselves. Is that the truth of that?
I believe they separate themselves because there's a continued, I would say, lack of acceptance and acknowledgement of their value and their ability to contribute at the same level. And when you always think that you should be the one making the rules and no one else can do that, then that's what creates that problem.
Twenty, twentieth century, twenty-first century racism. Okay, I lost my question. You provoked so many thoughts here. If you're not elected to the city council, what is going to happen in city government?
Well, I'm, I'm really hoping that the people recognize that it is time for change, that it is time for new blood, that it is time for no more, longer status quo, no more big money. What people don't realize is that little old me, businesswoman, African-American female is taking on a billion-dollar corporation. Nick Fish comes from one of the wealthiest families in America out of New York. He's a transplant from New York. His father, his lineage goes all the way back to U.S., U.S. Lee's Grant and beyond. And he's a millionaire. And the fact that he basically is just prompting himself up on the backs of the people so that he can move to another position, he's not really concerned about the quality of life of all people. He's just going along with the status quo. And it's time for a new vision and a strategic plan so that we can return the prosperity back to the city of Portland, that all people are able to contribute.
So he's a city councilman now?
Yes, he's the city commissioner at this time.
Commissioner, yeah. And you're challenging him?
I am challenging him and his record. His record of, of doing little, being a no-show as it relates to the Department of Justice and, and social consciousness. The fact that it took, the auditors, city auditors report, reported that after a whole twelve months, that the city council, the mayor failed to respond to the excessive force charges that, and complaints that came from citizens from the city. And it wasn't until AMA, Albina Ministerial Alliance, requested to the city that they bring in the Department of Justice because after twenty, almost thirty years, we've seen excessive force. They want to disguise it up under mental health, but it's been racial as well. But the fact that the city chief of police, the DA's department, and the mayor and the city council has failed to have courage, leadership, and the political will to fully implement and execute community policing and stop the excessive force killing unarmed citizens in the city of Portland in the twenty-first century.
So then Nick Fish is looking for higher office in, in politics?
Yes, I believe he wants to run for mayor or maybe even a congressman. That's, that's what I understand.
How about you? Would you go beyond this city council?
Well, at this time, I'm focused on this position, one position at a time.
Of course.
But I believe I have the capacity, the experience, and the track record, and the courage, and the political will, and the tenacity to stick to it and work with people and for the people as a public servant, not as a politician. We have to change, go back to when politicians used to be public servants. I haven't, I haven't heard the word "public servant" in over forty years. And that tells me that we've gone the wrong direction and we've been working from the wrong end. And I believe now Portland has to do a self-correction as it relates to public service and what that really means. Because as a business owner who has been successful and being successful, I could continue to run a million-dollar company and grow it and continue to hire people. But I could no longer sit and watch the destruction of a community, the gentrification, the displacement, the leaving behind and the disregard of life of people who look like me, and the criminalization and the throwing away of human capital and social capital of the lives of people. I believe that that has to be corrected and it has to happen now.
So I, I hear in our conversation that you're on a campaign trail and you're, it's a commercial for you.
Well, thank you. Gotta get the message out. It's all about the people. You know, people, as I've learned, it's like, oh, well, what's unique about you? Well, it's not that so much unique about me. It's that my experience at this time, that it's about the people. It's not about me. It's that I have the skills and the qualification and the ability to move forward with a vision and with a real plan to recognize that the city, we're in a really bad place as far as economics, jobs, businesses, and how the city is being grown. If they're projecting another million people to move to the city of Portland over the next twenty to thirty years, then we need to do that right. And it's gonna take having a real plan.
How are viewers in other cities in the country going to find what's happening in this interview? How is it going to be useful for them?
Well, I think that you've said that it's gonna get out to internationally and nationally. And then also, if I'm able, would I be able to put that on my website and broadcast this as well?
Of course.
Okay, so that's how we would market that. And if you have other ideas.
So they would see what you're about, what you're doing, and the reasons you're doing it so that there's a model for people and their communities to follow.
Yes, yes.
And they will know the difference between assertive and aggressive and so on.
Yes, exactly. Because I actually, I have a track record. Like I said, in nineteen ninety-three, I recognized that if the neighborhood, if the city, if how the situation was going was gonna turn around, that it was gonna take the actual people who lived in that neighborhood to come up with a plan to restore it. And I have a working model because I also wrote a book. And I created two nonprofits, one of which is Y2ABC, Youth and Young Adult Being Connected. And that book that I wrote was how I raised my children. But it can be used for many applications as it relates to life planning, career planning. And it helps young people connect their education to their career future. And the model works because I've used it over the last five years in my youth program.
What's the title of the book?
Investment Portfolio.
And you didn't bring a copy of the book?
Not with me.
Next time.
Yes.
Okay. What else can we talk about to do with your candidacy? We have maybe six or seven minutes more to talk about other things.
Sure.
And I would like to ask you about, you identify yourself as a Democrat and you're talking about Obama. There are some of us who are disappointed with Obama's performance to date. And for me, I am too. However, at the same time, I recognize that he's doing what he can.
Yes.
He didn't close Guantanamo. There's a few more things that he, I think he should have done. I think it comes down to him wanting to stay alive.
I believe you're right, Dr. Don. As I understand it and have experienced, I actually went, attended the two thousand George Bush inauguration. And I also. inauguration, and I also...
You did?
Yes, I did. I went on my own, because as a citizen, what I understood was that we have failed to really exercise our democratic right and participate in our election processes, and people not going to Washington DC to really check in to see what's going on there with our government. And I called our congressman, Earl Blumenauer's office, and I told him that I wanted to go to the inauguration. He had a ticket for me. I also visited at the White House.
Good for you.
And I was there for 10 days, and it was my love for US history and just politics from earliest high school. I can remember my junior, senior teacher really just bringing that alive for me, and so I wanted to go and visit the history there as well, and when I did, I really, there's three places that I feel like I could move to and live, and DC is one of those places just because it's the nation's capital and all of the beautiful, wonderful history there. And then the other place would be Houston because of the sun. Yes, we want sun.
I'm trying to think of the name of the congressman from Georgia who was with Martin Luther King so much. Walking with the Wind is the book he wrote about...
John Lewis?
John Lewis.
Yes, I actually met John Lewis this year.
I did too.
Yes, that was...
This year?
Yes, with my grandson at the Martin Luther King Breakfast over in Vancouver with Miss Dina Perro, hosted that event.
Wow.
Yes, and he picked my grandson up and spoke to us, and it was amazing. I have pictures, yes, but that was so inspiring, because even with that, I just feel like there are so many words of, or confirmations in my, making my decision to run. I know that it was, that it's the right time. I know that I made the right decision, and I believe in my heart in that where I'm at today, that it was the right transition because of where we're at in Portland as far as the political landscape, about what's going on, and that it's just time for more democratic exercising from the people, the governed, and we need to make sure that more people are stepping up their participation to the next level.
How much is money affecting your ability to compete?
Well, it's affecting it a lot, because what I understand, that to me is the politics, is that so many of the people who I felt should financially support me in this run are tied in to the money of the city and their programs, and to me, I feel like it reminds me, I almost say, are we living in slavery days? That people are so connected to false money, false hopes, that, and tend to say that that's okay when, when we have so much destruction and our young people and families not doing well, and that they're willing to accept that little bit instead of getting what's the life, the liberty and the pursuit of happiness, that, you know, it's almost that once again, we've served a check and it's come back really insufficient.
Is there classism in this country?
There is classism.
How about worldwide?
That too, yes, because what, they say 37 people own all of, percentage, a great percentage of all the wealth, and then, and reading some of the articles that trust fund babies, so...
Does racism go beyond just America's borders? Is it worldwide?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. When I look at Africa and I see the...
The Middle East?
The Middle East, and I see the pillaging and the, and the taking away and all in the name of democracy, and, you know, and understanding that that's not, yeah.
What about democratic socialism as compared to monopoly capitalism? What do you think about those, that idea, replacing monopoly capitalism or crony capitalism?
Well, as a, as a person who believes in educating the citizens, I believe that we, there's a, we can start that conversation tonight. So, Sowant, Sharon is in Portland for the $15 living wage. They passed that in Seattle, and so she's gonna be at the Presbyterian Church, I believe, starting at 6 o'clock this evening, and so I just believe it's a discourse and educating people to really let them see how we've made bad policy decisions, because we never should have took on the war on drugs, because we've taken good money, that money could have actually gone to schools.
Is it really a war on drugs or a war on a certain class of people? And time is running out, and I want to give you...
Both, both.
Yeah, will you look at the camera and give some final message?
Sure.
This camera, that, what you want to tell the viewers?
Sure.
That would be of use to them.
Hello, everyone from the 95 neighborhoods. I'm Sharon Maxwell. I'm running to be a public servant, not a politician. I'm a mother, I'm a businesswoman, a community activist, a community builder. I have the courage, I have the tenacity. I will bring oversight, transparency, and accountability to city Portland City Hall as your next city commissioner. This is not about me, this is about you, about people over the 95 neighborhoods having a quality of life, making sure that in our city, the wonderful city we call green, livable and sustainable, that all people matter and that we can all do well. It's time for shared community value, and I ask you for your vote, May 20th, when you get those ballots in the mail. Sharon Maxwell, your next city commissioner. Thank you.
I didn't know we were gonna have an overt political campaign speech here. It's wonderful, and I want to support you from here on out, anywhere along the way, and if you decide to move on beyond the city council, wherever you're going, I'm impressed with who and how you are, what you're about.
Thank you, Dr. Don.
And keep that in mind.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Now, let's have a few public service announcements. To get my local broadcast schedule, go to my website and click on Present activities and Public Service Announcements. To watch Dr. Don's shows on the web where you're watching the city you're watching, go to Don BM YouTube and click on a particular show, and you can watch two hundreds of shows. The American Civil Liberties Union, our civil liberties are going down the tubes faster and faster. Go to that website and see about the American Civil Liberties Union, and I'm rushing toward the end. They get my shows broadcast by the stations, at your local public access station. Go to www.pgmedia.org and follow instructions there on how to do that, to learn how to end corporate personhood, go to www.movedtoamend.org. We gotta amend the Constitution and reverse Citizens United and those kinds of things. Oh, and thanks for watching. Remember KFC, you know, I'm gonna tell you about KFC. Not that KFC, not Kentucky Fried Chicken, Dr. Don's KFC, kind, friendly and charitable. Be kind, be friendly, and be charitable to you too, and you too, and you too, Ricky, and you too, and you too.
Yes.
Thanks again, and good night.